All right, so it's three eleven and we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order if we can all stand up for the pleasure.
All right, so roll call in a sentence, we have Carol, Bob, Ed, myself, and we have Doug.
Doug is still online.
Okay, so I need a motion to allow Doug to join the
So moved.
Meeting under special circumstances.
That's what I said.
Motion in a second.
On favor?
Public, let's go ahead, I need a motion for approval of the final agenda.
So moved.
Motion in a second, on favor? Aye. Public comment?
I have three, okay?
Uh, there's two in person and one I need to read in. Uh, first is John, is it Thielen?
Yeah.
Uh, he is from, he lives on Parkline regarding fishing behind houses in the middle of the night. Just reminder, you have three minutes.
Sure.
You just get your name.
Uh, John Thielen. Uh, one-two-eight-nine-one, Parkline Drive. Um, I'm also here on behalf and with permission and request from Levon Henshaw, who lives next door. It's the end of Parkline Drive, very, very close down here. Um, there's a small strip of land next to the lake on Griffin. It's across the street from the seven-eleven and to the east a little bit, right? Um, what's happened is that, uh, somehow we have had several incidents of people parking there for several different reasons, fishing and otherwise, between eleven PM and one o'clock in the morning. Um, my feeling is watching the behavior that they're attracted to this site because they can pull their trucks or cars in so far to get right next to the lake and then pull parallel to the shore which finds shines their headlights right into the back of our home. Um, we have been awakened before by huge blasts of light filling up our bedroom to find out that there are are men walking up and down the lake, just thirty yards from our back of our house, um, shining flashlights, flashlights at us. Um, we've been awakened before by voices in the night to find people out there fishing or doing whatever, um, late at night. And the feeling that I have is that the attractiveness of the site is due to the fact that they can pull their trucks in all the way to the edge of the lake. And when they pull them sideways, they can almost fish out of their car doors, if that's what they're doing.
Is this along Griffin Drive?
Yes, it is.
It's by Listaken Seven.
So just when you go past the seven-eleven, it's right on the right.
Right by Listaken. If you're going this direction on seven-eleven, it's gonna be on the left.
So you're in, you're in, uh,
Pine Wood.
Pine Wood Lakes.
And on the, on the house, it's the closest one. It's almost right on the sidewalk there. And the cars are pulling in, there's a hedge that's been planted, it's been wonderful. Now, I think it was in cooperation with this board and the neighborhood in order.
You don't mind, so I can keep online, can hear you, thank you.
The hedge was planted and that's wonderful. Um, but it stops and then there's a grove, a very beautiful grove of palm trees and other natural plantings, but there's so much room in between that allows cars or multiple cars and now, you know, in the middle of the night to be able to pull up so close that then they're able to angle to the lake and then they shine their headlights in and we feel very vulnerable and very unsettled, um, by it. I have called police, but it took two police calls to get one group to move one night. Um, so it's, uh, we feel a huge security concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I request one last thing?
Yeah.
Um, my idea is just a row of strategic plantings somewhere between the sidewalk and that grove of palm trees to not allow trucks to drive that far up in and still allow the uh, maintenance golf carts and different things for the lake to get through.
So like a buffer?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Next. All right, next, uh, it says F and
He left.
He left?
Yeah.
Oh, never mind. All right, never mind.
You don't want to even say what he had?
It says Commerce Lakes Drive.
Yeah, so. The Commerce Lakes Drive, um, and the defunct POA.
That's why I was late.
All right, anyone to read one?
I have, yeah, I want to need to read in, um.
She had a quote, Tamra?
Tamra.
Oh, yeah, you answered.
Okay, are you sure you don't want me to ask the question to the board about the plans with Palm Park?
Oh, sure.
Okay, Tamra, she was actually here.
She's gonna ask a question that we won't know the answer for? Is that what you're gonna ask me?
Yeah.
And a comment from a comment that we don't answer, okay.
Yeah.
As far as we know, there is no plans for the Palm Park. I saw your email, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious.
If you wouldn't mind coming up, please, I just, thanks for engaging, just introduce yourself, please.
Tamra's on and I'm in Pine Crest Community and I had just, um, sent out an email, I think to all of you a few days ago. Anyway, it was about asking about the plans for the Palm Park because the last couple of meetings I had attended, whether it be the PrAC or this meeting, I understood that this group tasked the PrAC with, hey, come up with some ideas and there's no plans right now, but, um, whenever I sent the email, there were, there was somebody out there surveying and putting up lines and then a few days later, there's somebody digging and it looks like they're putting out irrigation, which led me to believe, well, there are some plans, so I had just asked kind of, what are those plans?
So Chelsea was the one to answer. Anybody else?
Uh, nope, nobody has their hand raised online either.
Okay, perfect. So local achievements and recognition, do we have anything, Chelsea? Okay, so advisory committees and items to report.
I move, uh, to appoint Tom Shaner to the P-PAC, uh, committee as their seventh member. Uh, the, uh, chairman, uh, John Grega, uh, did not renew his, uh, term. And, uh, he said he had, he had served his time. So, uh, Tom Shaner is also a member of the Community Association Board, which just happens to be meeting at the same time as we are today, but, uh, so that's the reason why he isn't here.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And this is done without regard to the prior request to have a permanent person appointed.
Correct. Yes, we're not even, that's always happened, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so now on Agenda Item Seven B, the resolution to designate
Yes, we did. Carol made a motion, Bob's second, we all favor.
To designate a representative from P-PAC on PPAC. I would like to move to table this to the first meeting in November of this year. I'd like to give it six months. When this was presented at P-PAC, I think it was a five to two vote, it was not a unanimous vote of, uh, P-PAC to go ahead with this, um, putting a, a permanent member on, uh, the board. And although they changed it from shall to may, P-PAC may put a member on the board. By the motion that we just made beforehand, they've actually done that now. So I'd like to give it six months to see how this works.
Okay, so you have
And with the cooperation and everything. And you know what, if it works out good, maybe we don't even need this resolution ever. Maybe we just all work together and
But this resolution's already been tabled because until we get the financial stuff resolved.
So, so we're just waiting, so you're hoping this is in terms of
I think that's what's going on, Tony, right? Didn't we resolve that everything related to P-PAC is
Well, I just kind of figured that it would be resolved by November of this year.
Well, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying, it's nothing we're gonna act on today anyway.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so time to November.
Aye.
Is Doug fine?
The first meeting in November.
All right, perfect, thank you. Approval of minutes, anything, any edits?
I didn't have any.
Nope.
Move, move to approve.
So a motion?
Second.
Second by Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent to agenda items A and B, anything to call?
I didn't have any on either one.
Neither one.
Need a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
When you make a motion to approve consent items A and B?
A and B.
And then you have a second by Ed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, District Engineer?
Yep, Stephen Agapi, are you on?
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
We can.
All right, um, today I've got two items to discuss, uh, one being what is on the agenda, it's the ninety percent of the Lake Bank Restoration uh, for FY twenty-five. Um, earlier today, I sent Chelsea, um, a PDF which shows the lakes for FY twenty-five. Um, just an overview sheet, which you had seen before on the sixty percent plans, not much has changed there, but we did add a table showing uh, a tree count of the trees that, you know, could potentially be impacted, so I wanted to share that with you guys and just, you know, go over that with you guys since that was a change since the last one. And Chelsea, if you need me to, I can share screen and, and maybe that'd be easy on my end.
Can you see it?
Yep, I can see that, perfect. So this is Lake Seventy-Five, this is in Daniel's Preserve, um, so based on our survey, we tied in the plat to the property lines in the aerial, our surveyors, you know, grabbed shots of the trees that are within the lake maintenance easement. Um, so based on that information, it looks like twenty-four palm trees would be, uh, removed on this particular lake. Um, so that's that.
Stephen, can I just ask a question for clarification? Um, you guys didn't actually go out and survey the LME, you just did an overlay?
No, so our surveyors, they, um, they grabbed property corners, real property corners, multiple of them, and we have the plat and we tied them together, so the plat has been aligned to the property corners that were picked up in the real world. So, you know, our easement that is shown on the plans is, is accurately depicted. Um, so then they also picked up real coordinates of trees, so, you know, based on that information, we know which trees are in the easement.
So that's twenty some tree?
Twenty-four palms.
Well, palms plus those others that are within the LME of that area that's outlined in blue.
Yeah, so there are cypress trees and oak trees, there is a deep lake, uh, tree requirement on this pond, so we would keep those trees for that requirement um, and the myrtle as well, and then add additional trees to get to, I believe it's twenty-one trees are required, so we'll have to add, you know, another ten oak, uh, ten cypress trees to this lake. Um, if you go to the next lake, Chelsea, please, or Laura, whoever's driving.
Laura.
Chelsea makes me do all the work.
Women drivers.
Uh, so this is Lake Eighty-One, this is the front of Daniel's Preserve. Um, this one has fourteen palms that are located within the lake maintenance easement that would have to be removed. So, but there are other trees that are on the south part of the, the lake, you can see there that border Commerce Lakes and I there, I believe, are in the LME, but we're not proposing any restoration over there, so we didn't touch those. And I also believe they're probably required for like a landscape buffer easement. Um, so we're not proposing to touch any of those trees there. All right, uh, next lake, please.
And a fence on that one.
Um, so this lake here didn't, per the DO, did not have any tree requirements. Um, so including the oaks, um, there's eighty-five trees that were identified to be in the LME. The only thing I'm not sure about is on the, on the left-hand side, I'll say, of this lake over by that like green space, there's a bunch of clusters of palm trees. So those are within, you know, they're next to the lake, but I believe, I'm not a plant guy, I'm not a landscape architect, but I think they were probably planted for a landscape buffer easement for this development. Um, but, you know, based on the board's decision earlier, you know, we were tasked with looking at trees within the LME, so I identified those. I think we need clarification and from someone that has more expertise that can say that those can be removed. Um, but, yeah, in total, there's eighty-five trees on this, this lake that would have to be uh, removed per board direction to clear cut the LME.
Tony, does the, the plat show a, uh, a buffer easement on this?
Uh, I don't know, I can look and I guess one other aspect is whether or not Lee County required these plantings as part of some land
They require them, but they may require them outside the LME.
Typically is, so, um, this is Daniel's, this is Timber Ridge?
Timber Ridge.
Yeah.
This is Timber Ridge, yes.
Do you have the plan available? I can try to retrieve it quickly, but
I do have the, I have, um, yeah, you can pull it up if you want to, but, um, there is a landscape buffer easement that we do call out and we do show it on the left-hand side of the figure. Uh, but it looks like most of those cabbage palms or sable palm trees, however you prefer to call them, but, uh, they don't appear to be mainly planted in that buffer easement, a lot of them seem to be lakeward of that. Um, again, I mean, I don't know if that's
You mean outside the landscape?
Stephen, on the west side, what is that, uh, bump up against? Is that a, uh, the backyards of homes on what addition?
That is the backyard.
It's Daniel's Preserve. So it goes up that far?
Okay.
Which way is it?
Okay, um, so Lake Ninety-Eight, um, there's not a lot of trees here, there wasn't a tree requirement on this lake. Um, we identified twenty trees that were within the, within the lake maintenance easement. Um, you know, mainly oaks and palm trees.
Dory, those oaks are along Commerce Lakes Drive.
Yeah, so that's another thing, you know, those, those oaks over there, they may be part of a grander, I don't know, DO requirement for just general landscaping. Um, so I think that kind of needs to be vetted too.
Well, we're at ninety percent design, so we need feedback from the board, that's essentially what we're looking for today.
So
Well, feedback
Okay, so, so you're saying as you, as you bid these, when you get to a hundred percent, you start bidding these out, these amount of, this amount of tree removal is going to be included in the bid documents?
Yes.
We'll see that.
As of right now, yes.
Okay.
So we got people that have no trees that are paying for and subsidizing the total cost of the project for other people's trees.
That's what I asked Tony, because for me, I wanted to charge the people they encroach in the LME, that was my point.
Well, that's
But Tony said no.
We cannot.
No, 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 you, you can't, again, the, the fact that they're encroaching, we have the ability to take them out, I mean, you can't especially levy an additional assessment against them, you can't find them.
Well, how about we put a notice, we do a fee schedule, just no different than what we would do with utilities when they're planting and statues around utility boxes. How about we do a fee scheduling and if you do it, then you can, we don't call it fine, we'll call it fee schedule for removal. I'll work around. I'll work, I'll work around if you want, you know.
Well, the statute talks about you have rates, fees and charges for use of district facilities or services, paraphrasing.
So you've nagging me for too long.
Well, that, that may, that may, I might
You like that?
I like that, let me think about that, I like it. I'm on, I'm on the eighty percent side.
But what we're talking about right now is the cost of tree removal has just been added to the total cost of the project, period.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, because it's part of the overall stormwater management system.
I'm sorry?
And fencing.
Oh, fencing also?
Yeah.
But, but I am with that, like, I don't think it's fair that the residents that, that we all have to pay for it when it's not, but if we, if we could amend the fee schedule and add that to it, expedite that.
No, no, think about it, no, no, we'll talk some more, but I mean, I
We just can't simply issue a letter to them saying, uh, remove the trees, you've got ninety days, hundred and twenty days.
We, we, we can send them a letter saying you are, you have, uh, by your, by your vegetation being in this location, you're interfering with the use of our easement.
Structure.
I'm sorry?
Or structure, defense.
Yeah, well, again, yeah, but interfering with the use of our easement, uh, we were going to remove it and then the question is, how do we collect other than having to go to court action and or, well, that's Some people, particularly if they're palm trees, might want to relocate them, they're pretty easy, oak tree not so much. Give them the option, the sixty, ninety days, whatever, if you desire to keep this tree, move it out of a, out of the easement and reposition it somewhere else on your property. No arm, no foul, and then they pay for it. Yeah, or another point, and I've not, not thought about this approach yet, maybe, maybe adopt a rule, we already talked about how you can't, you know, do activities or engage in activities in the stormwater management system without the district approval. But a lot of these trees have been there before that rule was adopted, so the question is, can we basically utilize it and say, hey, we never really get the permission, they're gonna say, you knew it was there all along. And so it's almost like, it's called latches or waiver or stopple that were prevented from trying to go back and use an older rule. But I, I mean, the idea of writing them and telling them, hey, we're gonna try, or, or no, you need to take them out, or we will take them out as part of this overall project, which will increase the cost of the project to you and your neighbors.
The quicker we do it, when that, when the contractor comes out and now that we have this new rule and they start the project, one of the first things they're gonna be doing is taking all these out to get them out of the way. And those people are gonna have slim to little time to react.
That's why we need to
We need to go to them right now and tell them, you have a lot on so-and-so and so-and-so, you've got ninety days, hundred and twenty, whatever it is, to remove this at your expense.
If you want to keep it.
If you want to keep it, otherwise it will be removed.
I think that's a great idea when you have that community knowledge and involvement, and they can't say they didn't know about it.
That's right.
And also they can't say they did not have a chance, I think that's huge, you know. For the oak trees on Commerce Lakes, it's kind of a different
Oh.
Issue.
You're giving them an option.
Well, I'm not giving anybody, I'm just talking for us.
Yeah.
Do we really want to get back into oak tree removal business on our street?
Uh, if we do, we do. Lake Management Easement, that's selective enforcement, I don't know that I would do that.
I, I, I know the pitfalls. The board, the board has the ability to say that because of the intrusive nature of these, the trees in a lake maintenance season, which adversely impacts the ability to maintain the lakes, you can say, take them out there and if they're not interfering in another location, not take them out. I don't want to get into the gray areas.
For eighty-five trees on one of the pond, because that would be a long meeting.
A long meeting.
That's true. At least should have considered, for whatever reason, that if we take them out, that's gonna be a whole other
Oh, it's, oh, it, it will be. Anyway, but I, I think that you have to give them the opportunity, like you said, there are some trees that are of a nature that could be easily transplanted.
Yep.
But you start talking about oaks, you're creating any oaks. We can transplant them at the bottom of the lake.
So Chelsea, what is the direction that you are seeking from the board?
So ultimately, we need your final approval of this ninety percent plan, so Tetra Tech can proceed to a hundred percent. They've already applied for the LDO, they
Okay, ninety percent plan includes the removal of the tree that are listed on the little charts.
Yes, ma'am.
On each.
Which is the direction that we made a motion?
Yes.
She just wants confirmation of
What, what's the timeline?
We need to know how many we were pulling out before, now we know.
Okay, let's, let's, we'll fast forward, what's the timeline, we've got to still get, what, SRF approval?
Yes, sir.
And where are we at on funding on this one?
So this is
August?
That we would go to the August RFI.
Okay.
For hopefully to get awarded the construction funds for these, at that same August RFI, we're asking for design of twenty-six ponds.
Okay, when do we, when would we be bidding these, September?
August, September timeframe.
Okay, so then we would be starting construction how, soon after that, thirty days?
Yeah.
Sixty days? So between, somewhere in August, we need to send a letter out to every homeowner on these seven ponds.
Plus HOA.
Plus HOAs, and let them know, hey, guys.
Well, sooner the better.
Why can't you do it now? Why can't you send it now?
Because the plans haven't been approved yet.
Can I jump in? So Tetra, Tetra, thank you, Tetra Tech has been tasked with getting pricing for surveying the LME of the ponds, because if I'm a resident, I need to know where is that LME. So they're reaching out to a couple vendors to go out and then we can send that letter and say, hey, if you're on this orange line, anything, you know, lakeward of this orange line.
You just want to wait a little bit in?
Yes.
So in other words, you're going to go and stake the backside of the LME?
Yeah.
Okay, that's appropriate.
And then send the letters.
We're gonna have to do it, we're gonna have to do it anyway.
That's appropriate, and sooner we have that
That would, that, that would be a, that would be a
Stephen, you're working through a couple vendors that you've got for surveying? Correct. Okay, so we're waiting on
Is that a yes?
Yes, he said correct, yes.
So
All right.
Okay, we need approval of ninety percent plans, please.
Make a motion, we continue with the plan for the removal of LME trees?
Second.
Is that ninety percent approval, is that what you're saying?
You, you selected a part of the, she wants the approval, uh, we need a motion for the FY twenty-twenty-five pond design ninety percent that includes whatever's in it, that's your motion, okay, second, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
One other, thanks Doug, I have one other thing.
One thing for, for engineer as well, go ahead, you first.
Um, Stephen, do you want to talk about Lake Eighty-Two? So, um, let me just preface with, the board gave direction nine foot from trench. Um, staff and the engineers and the contractor walked the pond that, uh, Brad Extreme Divers is working on under B and Z. Um, the contractor, I received a letter that they are unwilling to, um, remove any trees beyond the scope of work. Um, so ultimately, uh, Stephen, I'll let you explain the trees that are within that nine-foot trench that the board gave direction at the last meeting.
So can you do it?
No, they're unwilling to do the work, so we'd have to solicit a different contractor to go out to remove those.
Okay, Stephen?
Okay, so this is Lake Eighty-Two, Daniel Preserve and part of Timber Ridge. Um, what you're looking at right now is an overview, uh, figure of the lake and I've got some photos and some callouts showing uh, the trees that fall in within that nine-foot, um, you know, measurement, which has been pretty established by, you know, the board. Board would like to move forward with removing those trees, that's not really in, you know, discussion at this point. Uh, what I wanted to bring up was that there are, uh, there are seven trees that are within the nine feet that could qualify as deep lake trees, so we wouldn't have to remove them. And if we can keep them, um, we could just plant less cypress trees that are planned as part of the landscaping plan, so there are two black olive or shady lady trees and there are five green buttonwood trees that are already on the lake, they're planted by developer or residents, I think the green buttonwoods were recently planted by residents, but um, those could remain, they're within nine feet, but we have to plant cypress trees on the lake bank anyways, so we would just be planting less cypress trees and we're keeping these trees that have been established on the lake, um, to swap those out. Um, Chelsea asked me to bring these to the board at, for a decision, um, so that's kind of what we're presenting you.
So how many trees do we have that do not qualify to remain that the contractor is saying that he does not want or have the ability to take out? How many trees are left?
Okay, so I'll just go through them, there's like one small patch of bushes that you can see kind of in the top middle there. There's a small avocado tree that the homeowner would probably be pretty willing to move. Uh, there's a small citrus tree that, I didn't include the image, but it's another three-foot tree, similar to the avocado tree. Um, there is, uh, two small palms down there in the bottom center. They're approximately four foot tall, they look like they could be easily moved, one of them's dead actually, but uh, the homeowner can probably remove that remaining live one, uh, to their side of their property. And then you have those three massive, uh, royal palms dead center in the figure, they're probably forty foot plus tall. Um, there, and then the last bit would be, uh, an orica palm, which is kind of like a clustering palm. Uh, that's on the, uh, the right-hand side, I don't have a photo of that one, but that one's not, it, it's a small patch of orica palm that were within nine feet. And then there's some fences too, but that's essentially what we're talking about here. Not a lot, except for the
Four trees.
The royal palms, those are big trees.
Twenty.
Well, I heard three royal palms and one
No, avocado, avocado, citrus, a buttonwood.
Yeah, but those little ones are so small that the homeowner is probably gonna move, that's
But we're
Pull them out.
We're assuming, so
Well, that's not true.
Yeah.
I'll give you a shovel.
Yeah.
And, and you know, we can and the buttonwoods and the shady ladies if we can keep them.
Tony, do we
He doesn't.
Why can't we just go out and get a vendor to give us a price? Why do, do we have to go out for bid for all this?
No, it's such a small I, I, I've taken out orica palms myself, by him, by hand, so I mean, you can, I'm just kidding, but
I wanted clarification and confirmation from you all, because between those royal palms and some of these other larger trees, that's the direction that we are proceeding with, and so we got word back yesterday morning from the vendor that they don't want to do any change orders to remove any additional landscaping beyond the scope of the contract, so we have to go solicit proposals for these trees.
Well, I did, again, I, do we have to get proposals or just go get a company to do it?
I think the, 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 the amounts can be relatively small, I would not imagine it's gonna be large, I think you call some, but, for example, like
bids and RFs and all that.
For example, if you're gonna take out the royal palms, Donald did the ones I'm, I'm
Okay.
Royal palm's gotta be professionally removed. Correct, like The other little ones, let's give the homeowner the chance again, would you like to bring this over, eight, Peter, you want us to throw it away? Yep, and just pull somebody off the shelf that Chelsea has.
Okay. That's, that's the direction, you get another vendor. Okay.
Okay, we're good.
Anything else?
Anything else?
Yep, just, just to clarify, like, if, so if staff's okay with the location of the two olive trees and the five buttonwoods, can we keep those even though they're within nine feet and we can swap them for new plantings of cypress trees to meet the deep lake requirement?
Yeah, because you just swap, yes.
Okay.
As long as it does not obstruct the maintenance.
And that's the thing, black olives get break, I've got one in my backyard.
I'll say this, uh, black olives, I think they do qualify as lake maintenance tree, but I don't think buttonwood, buttonwood does. Going by memory, I did not really think that, not fully
Confirmation from accounting about those qualifying, those deep lake trees.
Yes.
All right, and I'm fine.
All right, Stephen, you need any other directions?
Uh, no, I Uh, no, I think that's it for me, but I think Flavi had a comment for me.
I did. I just want to keep it up the board updated regarding, um, communication. So we did have a communication has improved with, with, with Tetra Tech and staff, but we did have another a few deadlines, contractual deadlines that were not met over the past week or so. Um, if you guys have any questions, I would just direct you to just talk to Chelsea and.
Over that.
Uh, we can talk about it now or.
I just had a general question. Was it a deadline that all the parties had agreed to?
It was a contractual deadline. It's not a deadline that, hey, this is day one, but we'll give it to you on the twenty-fifth now. It's a contractual deadline that was missed.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Hi, thank you, Steven.
Hey, Flavi, I'm not, not to beat a dead horse, but I, I did see an email from Chelsea and one of the items was one of my projects, which was the FY twenty-five lakes. I don't know if that ever got corrected, but she was using the start date as the date that Danny had signed the TA. But we didn't get Gateway signature for almost like a month later, and that's when we're accounting our NTP, not the date that Chelsea used to do the math. So I would dispute that one, but the other one was my fault. I did tell you that I would have permits out on Monday and it took a little bit longer than I thought it would, so I apologize for that.
Thank you, Steven.
Yep.
All right.
Yep.
Uh, let's go moving, uh, admin items. Chelsea, I'll have you take those.
Yep, so we, um, this first item, you may recall a couple meetings ago, um, Johnson Engineering on behalf of Lee County School District um, had put together a proposal for a turn lane and some internal improvements to, um, the Gateway Elementary School. Um, they are here. If you have any, uh, questions, the only item, um, with board direction, um, you denied the turn lane, so they proceeded with the internal, uh, improvements to the school. Uh, with that, staff reviewed, uh, engineer reviewed, and the district attorney reviewed, and we all are, we are all recommending approval of the internal improvements.
Do you have a plan sheet or something?
No, no.
Look at?
No.
What, what are we approving?
Uh, some minor improvements to their parking lot and, um, some utility, some, a couple utilities.
Does anybody looked at it? Know what they were talking about?
No, because there was nothing to look at. Dan, you want to come up or Steve?
But it's all on their property?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I actually, I have a small plan set here. I could pass around a few actually, but, um, my name's Steve Ball, a professional engineer with Johnson Engineering on behalf of the school district. Um, so in short, you have, uh, you've seen the plans as of a few months ago of, uh, the included turn lane. We have since removed that turn lane, um, but proceeded with the onsite improvements. So the onsite improvements are essentially a series of paving, grading and drainage, uh, improvements to essentially double stack, um, parent pickup and drop off improvements onsite. So, um, we've also added a little bit of parking in, in, uh, uh, one area. So it's mostly impervious area added. Um, as far as gateway utilities are concerned, um, we are not physically touching anything, um, or moving anything. Um, we're installing some bollards and a few of the easements that you have onsite. Um, but other than that, it is just mostly added impervious area, which we are actively, uh, um, water manager district permit right now for them to review. And, uh, um, other than that, there's, there's nothing from Gateway's standpoint that we are touching.
So it's an internal queue.
Yes.
Yeah, correct. Yes, we are essentially taking the current stacking right now onsite and adding two extra lanes to allow for double the amount of stacking up to the parent pickup drop off.
What do you expect, I think, just cars? How, how many cars?
Um.
Eighty?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, um, uh, but basically what we have onsite right now, we're for the most part doubling, so.
Should that resolve the problem?
Based on this work. I, I can't guarantee, I can't guarantee it's going to resolve any problem. It's certainly going to improve it.
And get hurted.
Yeah, and a- at this point, all it is is an improvement that the district's doing on behalf of the acknowledgement that, you know, they understand the, the situation, so.
And this, this was all from, the original turn lane that, uh, was proposed was prompted from, actually from this board where there was concerns raised of stacking on Griffin and parking. Um, they, the school district had come forth with a solution. We ended up turning that down because of some concerns with risk of our utility lines, if you recall. Um, so they continued to proceed with trying to resolve some of those onsite, um, stacking issues with regards to parent pickup.
Thank you, Sean.
Which in a way, I think that we did not do, we didn't do it right by our residents, because it's something that it's affecting a majority of the travelers on Griffin, not necessarily the residents on Griffin, but all the travelers in Griffin, and I think we should have thought a little bit more on that decision. So if that comes in in the near future, I will tell you right now, my decision will be to work with them and have it done. Otherwise.
Let's see how effective this is.
Yeah.
We got nothing to lose with it.
Tony and Stephen, you two don't have any issues?
Not at all. Yeah, you answered my, I, I had, I just saw there were bollards and utilities, but they explained that the purpose was to actually to protect any infrastructure, so I had no problem with that. So appreciate it. Quick response on that.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we have exhausted all options, um, with, with the school, um, around whether it's the turning lane. I know that they're doing some, what we're talking about today, uh, some eternal stuff, but I, that's not going to solve the problem. Um, the reason why I'm wanting to make sure that we are exhausting all of our options is out of all the schools, we have the best working relationship with the elementary school that sits adjacent to our property. They allow us to use their, their parking facility at no charge. Um, so we've had a really great relationship with them for, for a long time. Um, a- and, you know, I just, I feel like the, the turn lane would be a great option. I know the challenges with utility and stuff, but if, if we could maybe continue to have some discussion, uh, around, you know, what is the risk for that? Uh, is there some other options? I just think I'd, I'd love to have that.
Yeah, Doug, I, I totally agree with that, and I, Chelsea and I had a conversation, I think, on Monday and regarding that. But I think as of right now, uh, that option is no longer available due to timing. Uh, Dana, yeah, you want to come up Dana? So, um, how have Dana just go over with you? With, and explain that, but I'm, I, I definitely think we should be open.
Good afternoon. For the record, Dana Hume with Johnson Engineering. Um, so as it stands today, uh, the turn lane is off the table. Uh, just simply because, uh, it's a timing issue. Um, we have work to do during the summertime that has to get done before school starts. And if we take a step back right now to try and pull the turn lane back in, um, we would not be able to get the improvements done onsite, which are critical, uh, to meet that school deadline. Um, we did talk before your meeting started. Um, the school district, we will talk with the school district and bring this option back to them. Um.
As long as that's.
So it could still be on the table.
Not for right now.
Not for right now, but in, in the fu- in the future, uh, we will bring it up and see if the school district is open to the opportunity to still do it. Um, I think the school district's, uh, stance, uh, on the issues that we had with the utilities still stands. Um, if the school district does move forward, my recommendation to them would be to put the flowable fill over the utility line, but you will not get, uh, an indemnity clause forever. Uh, you know, it would be the flowable fill and then we would move forward with construction.
I think it was a one year or something that they offered.
I don't know if they, if that would be on the table anymore.
But that's, yeah, just.
Which is covering a force lane or a gravity sewer?
Part force and part, um.
Reuse.
Irritation.
Oh.
Yeah, so, um, that's something that I will take back, uh, to the school district and, and the appropriate parties that make those decisions and tell them that you all are rethinking that. Um, it would, it would be nice to know if you guys are in favor of it, so that I can go back and tell them, you've reevaluated it. It's now your opinion that you would like if the school district can figure out time and funding, uh, to move forward with that.
How many feet are we talking?
Well, I think our position is, we, we understand our partnership with the school. We understand the benefit that a turn lane would, would give to the community and to the school as a whole. Uh, so we want to continue to have conversations. But knowing that there is some risk with utilities that makes the, you know, the solution a little more complex than just do it.
So do you want to, do you want to, do you want a, a motion from us that we'll be willing to do that? Or do you want to just a directive from us? Or you want to just a strong?
Just, uh, just a directive so that, you know, because I don't want to go back to the school district and.
And I get.
Have them.
Plan sheet of exactly what we're talking about here.
You've already had it.
Yeah, and, and our.
The biggest, the biggest concern that we talked about a couple meetings ago was the compaction of the, um, of the actual asphalt and, uh, site work. Um, but the engineer's recommendation was to put that flowable fill on top to help alleviate that compaction.
I understand all that, but what I'm trying to get to is that there's a big difference between access to a gravity sanitary sewer or storm sewer as opposed to a pressure line. Big difference.
Yeah.
And if this is all pressure line, then I, I would have maybe a different opinion than if it were a gravity sewer.
And we've got the plans that I can send to you.
Okay.
So back to the point, Dana will like us to give some direction, because there's no point of him talking to the school. We're going to go back and give him the same answer. So are we open to doing that, to look at it?
Open to it.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
I do that.
Or maybe some partnership if we moved the line, if it's a, if it's a force.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm open to.
I'm open to that too.
I'm open to it.
Okay, so we're, okay.
Okay. I ne- I never think it hurts us to talk.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. We do that good.
I need to get out of here by five.
Absolutely. So we will be back in touch with you, Chelsea, and let you know what the school district says. Thank you all very much.
Ultimately, I'm looking for your approval of the onsite improvements, um, for the school district.
Is she need a motion?
I shall move.
I'll second.
We have a motion a second on favor?
All right.
All right, thank you.
We'll get you something tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming.
All right, we'll talk about the Gateway High School next meeting, just so you know.
They said they're not coming.
Bye, Dana. All right, contractual award for the CCTV.
Tony, you want to take?
Yeah, I'll have Tony take. I had a few conversations with Tony regarding this one.
There's a, uh, a recommendation, uh, right now, uh, from the staff and the staff proceeding with this regard.
Tony, can we do some background here? Because my first deal on this was just the other day with, with, uh, Chelsea. Uh, how do we get to where we're at, I guess is the question.
You want to scroll down a little bit, Laura, so we can show the timeline?
I, do, do we have a set of RFP documents that are, first of all, clear such that, because when you get a bid like this and one guy is leaving you a million and a half dollars out of a million on the table, it raises eyebrows.
I think the staff and district would take the position that the, uh, the documents were clear, the bid schedules were clear, and the, uh, the mathematical calculations were clear as to how to perform them. Uh, so I think that's.
Well, do, do we have the ability? I've had this happen before, a long time ago. Do we have the ability? I know you can't go negotiate a contract without the award. That's probably illegal as hell. But can we go and talk to him to the extent to find out, did he make a mistake?
What, what, what we're talking about, without getting into great detail, is to table this to next board meeting to explore the possibility of having some conversations with a particular.
So we haven't had those conversations yet there.
So if I could try and, I, I have not had the time or opportunity to, um, think for, I've thought further about the staff recommendation to reject all bids. Um, it's something, um, that I think having a further conversation like you suggested.
Do you want to redraw and table?
Um, and if we could table it to the sixteenth meeting and, and.
Then with Chelsea and I, we, Flav, we can have conversations about the propriety.
About potentially, um, recommending, changing the recommendation.
Yes.
I moved to table agenda item, but item eleven B.
It, I, I would like to ask to get a copy of the specs for this to read it, uh, to this.
Okay, so we have a motion to table for the, the May sixteen.
Aye, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then.
Aye.
Yeah, we'll get that to you tomorrow.
All right.
All right, then this next item, um, if you don't mind tabling this next item to the sixteenth, we got some last minute proposals in, and I'd like to get those in front of you, so you have a complete, we got two, one additional.
Table agenda item eleven C.
What is eleven C?
The signs.
The signs.
Well, I'll go along for a discussion, but I want to talk, because this is confusing. I looked at the two proposals and one's quoting twenty-six signs and one's quoting thirty-two.
That was part of the.
That's why you're tripping.
That's why.
So we have a motion to table the item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Apologize for that.
Dana, we're fine for this.
I should have looked at it and I thought, how did that happen?
This next item, um, we own a beautiful new roundup, uh, fountain at the Griffin Roundabout, and, um, Flavia was for fortunate to get me in contact with the sheriff's office, um, trying to figure out some type of camera footage that
I was.
We, we can tie into their system, um, and so that way, knock on wood, in the event that there's any incidents, sheriff would have the access of camera footage.
Is this that license plate deal that was, that has nothing to do with that?
It's better.
Because I, I could tell you when you're doing license plate identification.
It's better than an actual camera.
You don't get it for these prices. They're much more expensive.
This would tie into their smart center. What, what do they call it? Their smart, their smart center?
This is only an observation type of camera.
It's the same camera that they have on, on, on this, on the streetlights.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, it's a.
Second monitor.
Yeah.
Okay.
So all, the recommendation from the vendor was to do the hardwired version, which is what I would recommend as well. So ultimately, I'm looking for your approval of this. Um, and then ultimately, the sheriff would have the insight of the footage.
Do these require any internet service?
Yes, and it would tie into hours at the office. Unless I can run a, um, comm line there.
So who's, who's, who's our service provider for this? Comcast?
Uh, points, point to point. He said that he would be able to.
Do they have to run a five?
No, our office.
What was the answer?
I'll make the motion to move forward the hardwired timer as requested.
Is there more money coming, uh, to be able to do this?
The vendor told me that he would be able to, to tie into our flop office.
That's all fine, tell the flop office.
That lasts for a year. What do we do after we, after we flip flop out of the flop office?
Internet or are you talking about power?
Internet. We have power there.
The internet's where the problem, this.
The internet, the internet that they're talking about is basically like the same connection we have between this building and across the street. We have dishes that beam internet back and forth, point to point, um, being to have a discussion about that.
Because I'm, I'm paying twenty-four thousand dollars a year to Comcast for internet service for cameras.
Multiple.
Multiple cameras, about thirty of them.
Good thing you got it.
They're expensive, and if, the, the issue is, I'm not, the, the camera cost is incidental. It's the monthly fee that the provider charges you on these things. I just want to make sure that we know all the costs.
I can only go by what the vendor told me, and he said it would be a point to point to our flop office. He was confident he could make that happen. Now, until it gets in, until we test it, I can't speak.
Let's have him give us, what's the operating cost of this, this deal?
All right, so.
But you want to go ahead and approve this and then ask for that?
I got a motion to approve it.
Yeah.
Got a second.
I'll second. Do we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Get it, just check it out, so we don't get burned on the backside.
It's a million dollar fountain, so I'd like to have eyes on it. God forbid something happened.
It didn't happen already.
Something happened already?
Oh, yeah.
Just some subs. That's all right. That's, that's expected.
Within a few days, I would.
Okay, so I will follow up as.
It was Pelican. I worried about people about it.
Oh, my God.
That's what happens in Pelican.
Okay, I'm glad that we had bubbles over here. I've heard that.
Oh.
I will follow up on the operating.
Rapid conversation.
Sure. Oh, that's just going down the toilet now, isn't it?
It is. It's gone downhill real quick.
All right, so let's go ahead.
Moving on.
Both two parts, uh, the draft shut down.
So this next item, uh, at the board's direction, I met with, uh, Mr. Banks, and I apologize, you want to pull up the correct one? Because for some reason, any TI in this document turned into a question mark, so. Oh, yeah. I think Georgia provided it.
I think.
Ask their side.
Yeah, ask Georgia. Anyway, um, so we put some history together. Now, I will, before we dive into the questions, I received the construction, the magnitude of construction cost yesterday from Tetra Tech and Palmontes. I'm reached out to, um, some contacts at Lee County that, where they have pickleball and dachshund and basketball courts and trying to see what the operating cost is that they've had and they've experienced. I expect to have all of these numbers to you before your next meeting, to, that way we can plug in. And I did receive the formula from, uh, Mr. Bloom. So as soon, as soon as I fine tune those operating cost numbers, I will send those to him and he can plug into the formula, so we can plug it in here.
The formula for?
The cost per, per household, EAU, or.
Okay, because we, we really only have two, that's single family home and.
He, he sent me. The, the, yeah.
Yeah, can, can we get a, a advanced copy of those uh cost breaks, uh capital and O and M costs that we do have?
Probably not gonna be until the um, the week of, I'm off next week.
Okay, well, the, the other one is that I've spent a lot of time on this, on neighborhood parks. You Google it and you end up with City of Minneapolis or Tampa, those numbers are, they're absurd, they mean nothing.
I did pull West Palm Beach actually had a good numbers.
You need a neighborhood park, and what I was running into with things that are somewhat similar to what we're looking at. You, you deal with numbers of uh ten thousand to fifteen thousand dollars O and M per acre. Not counting administrative costs. So when you start doing that and we're talking about maybe five acres, you quickly get to a hundred thousand without labor. Without labor, security, somebody's gonna be checking these people coming in. So the number gets up pretty expensive pretty quick.
So you get this, those numbers.
I will get it to everybody before the sixteenth.
Any other feedback on the survey? I, I don't have any.
Other than that, the, the, the format, I sent Chelsea some stuff and it was incorporated in. We had some wording that was very uh misleading. And I think all that's been taken care of.
Perfect. Uh, so I, I will have hopefully this in final form to you on the sixteenth for your approval for us to disseminate. Through the water bill and.
Well, we don't wanna do water bill, cause then it's gonna wait. I would just, we have money, I would just do hard mailing. So we can say if we. It was on your hands and you went to the mailbox and you picked it up and you chose to not read it.
You wanna mail it to the property address?
What, what are we talking about now? How we're distributing, how we're distributing the survey? Why aren't we doing it by email?
No, we, we do that.
It will, it will be paper by link.
A QR.
With like a QR code for people to scan, so we'll mail it to their property address.
Plus doing via email, plus doing it whatever.
Reason I ask is because we just did, I don't know if everybody's done it yet, but what, what would you call that?
Survey Monkey.
Brandy, Brandy. I, I sent mine in and the, the thing disappeared. I couldn't even make a copy of it, and I, so I, if we were going to do that and do that again, I think that's gonna upset some people. We need to be able to get a copy of what you send in. Survey Monkey always has been able to hit Ctrl P and get a copy of it before I hit send. I tried it with this and it didn't work.
He asked me to verify all the answers and this, that one, he did not ask for verified answers, that's why.
Alright, we'll look into that. But in the meantime, we can get it, we can get a price if we wanted to hard mail it, if you wanted to hard mail some type of flyer.
So you're talking fifty-two hundred addresses, ballpark.
Yeah, but at least we can say.
Agree.
And would you say it was like a co- like a copy P or?
That was my idea. I did, I never heard that before, somebody else.
Yeah, and just, just two cents on the QR code. A lot of people over seventy don't know how to use a QR code.
And that's why the people, yeah, okay.
They'll have a link to where they can.
Getting very hard to go out to dinner. They always want you to do the QR.
Alright, so let's move to draft the budget discussion.
So do you wanna have any further um budget discussion or you want, we'll update?
I think he needs to make a lot of updating.
As, as soon as you get that, if you can, especially the one that Stephen had done it, that we transferred over. And we get that in a format, I don't care about the numbers at this point in time, just so that we can see and know, have an idea. Cause I'm gonna say that eighty-five, ninety percent of that stuff is generic and gone. It's really not gonna be discussed or minimal to do. There's that remaining ten to fifteen percent that I think we have to hone in on.
Laura's already emailed Stephen Bloom to make those adjustments and set a deadline for it, so we will get that to you as soon as we possibly can. Alright.
Alright, district.
I have, I have two items that I just wanna bring up. The pilot letters will be sent out to um. Everybody, all of those property addresses, and if they have a snowbird address, it'll be sent to them as well as the.
We're talking about the water meters?
The water meters. Yep, alright, that, those are gonna go out tomorrow. Randy started stuffing those today. And then um one, one additional item. Our employment law attorney that we have used for a while, um poor Laura has been sitting on the employee handbook for over a year. If not more, um can't seem to get a response out of them with regards to reviewing that employee handbook. Um, I asked Tony if he had anybody in his firm that does those types of reviews. He said he did not. I reached out to an old um colleague and um they've provided a, what did you call it?
Retainer agreement or legal services agreement.
Yeah, and so for this one item, I'm just looking for your.
I did give them um the, the, the attorney that was supposed to stand, she's been out and she gave it to someone in her office. They're supposed to have it to me by end of day tomorrow.
If they do not, I'm looking for your approval to utilize this other firm to review the employee handbook only.
Okay, well, all the stuff we've got going in, uh with the only exception I thought that we really had on this. Was if we wanted to make any massive change as, as far as uh.
They wouldn't be part of that anyway.
We got so damn much other stuff going on right now.
Well, this, this handbook is, is. It is very outdated.
Tell me what, tell me what you know that I don't know, that what is the urgency?
It's, it's not. Just smelling together stuff and just needs to be cleaned up.
It's missing some policies, it's very.
Cause reading that stuff.
Plus to keep current with the changes in, in, you know, rules.
That's the top, the cover page. So I'm looking for your approval to, if, if we do not receive feedback by close of business tomorrow. To utilize this um other attorney for the, for their review of this employee handbook.
What's the cost?
I haven't looked at the.
Are they, are they somebody that's not.
It's.
Well, it's, it's HR, so it's not, yeah, it's, it'd be, yeah, it doesn't, government, yeah, it doesn't matter.
Second.
By Bob, all in favor? That's it, that's your two things. Don't come up with stuff later on. Alright.
Now it's Tony.
The, the saga of the two copiers. And one copier, uh we have a letter that was sent to us with a, I'll call it a payout, buyout, goes out for under two hundred dollars. And so that check was issued and I sent it off and it was received by the company called Milner or D L L. On Monday, and I made sure in the letter this constituted a full and final payment of everything. And so hopefully that one is resolved. This one is a second copier machine that a different entity, which I think they're related though. Entities is taking a harder stance on and keep sending invoices and no, you gotta pay, no, you have to pay. So it's getting to the point that it push comes to shove, that I think we may just wanna then start a declaratory judgment action. It would be in county court because it's under the threshold to get into circuit court, which is now thirty thousand dollars, but it's annoying. They keep saying we have a contract, we keep saying it's void for a number of reasons. And come, we keep telling them, give us instructions to, for you to have it picked up at your expense, and they keep saying you owe us money. So it's to the point where Laura, uh room in her office has been compromised by this, but also it just needs to have some finality.
How, what's the mount here that, that is, is in question that we start chasing this legally, we're gonna spend more in legal fees than we'd pay to.
That's part of the cost benefit analysis that we always take into account. It's probably about three thousand dollars now. But, 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 but what they're doing is they're constantly sending a bill, was it three, three fifty-eight a month or? Three sixty a month, and they say. And they say it goes until March of twenty twenty-five.
So after a year, we spent the three grand.
Yeah, my deal is pay it and get done, get it out of here. This is ridiculous.
No, they're saying the district owes until March of twenty twenty-five.
That we have to buy out the contracts.
My question is, what is it to buy this and make this go away to avoid going to court?
What I can do is I can extend an offer of settlement, say for two thousand dollars and see what they do. Or up to three thousand dollars if the board approves.
I move, we so do. Anytime I get six attachments from Tony on one item, I know it's expensive.
Here were two lake eastman trees.
I can take out the ricapalm in exchange. You use the Royals here. I, I've taken out a ricapalm, very good for your therapy because of some, the, the root system of that is a crazy roots. Real quick on the uh, the attorney general's opinion request to this, for Stony Brook. I talked with the assistant attorney general that's handling it. Uh, and they take the opinion requests in the order that they are received, and it's probably three to six months out from the date of receipt. And it went in and uh March, early March, I think, or late March.
Okay, so.
Translated means.
Here in November.
I'd say probably September, and, and the other news is the attorney I spoke with is the one that drafted the opinion last time. For the ultimate attorney general assistant that signed it.
Okay, would you be so kind to do a follow up with the Stony Brook?
Yes, I'll send an email.
Okay, thank you.
So have, have you got anything positive or negative either way from them?
No, it was just that it's in the queue. And again, it's the same attorney I dealt with last time who wrote. The, I'll call it, helped assist in the preparation of the prior. Yeah.
But we are different circumstances now, we're working together.
I have, I have some evaluation forms for Chelsea in the door, but not all of them.
And I sent out.
Yeah, I have yours and Carol's.
I sent out a email yesterday with a compliment. Um, I'm out next week, but if you'd like to sit one on one, I strongly would encourage and. Would like to sit with you one on one, um let me know when you're available.
You're gone next week, but you would be the week after.
Can we just call you next week and talk to you?
If you can. But I'll have to stand on one leg to get.
Are you picking or planting next week?
Yeah, they're finishing planting.
Alright, so nothing else, Tony, agenda management.
We've just gotten a lot of items queued up, RFPs, bids and things like that. I didn't know if you wanna talk about the admin building or you wanna wait. I can bring, what I plan on doing is.
I just think numbers.
Well, between that, um so we met earlier this week, Tony, the engineers, myself and some, and Daniel. And we uh put together some options for timelines of opening and awarding and, and you know.
So where are we at on actually a bid opening in light of the fact that we blended this with the park?
July, I believe was the last.
July?
July, early July. So, but I'm gonna bring back to you a couple of options, what I believe um we all agreed on it, but.
It was a really good work session.
It was, so I'll bring that back to you hopefully on the sixteenth.
Okay, uh I would like to ask that on the first meeting in June, what, June sixth? That we um put the P PERT contract on there, that was on the agenda last time. It's the Pelican Preserve Emergency Response Team. So according to our security arrangements with our front gate. When the winds get to a certain level, they can vacate, they put all the things up and they vacate. And we have within Pelican Preserve a volunteer group that comes in and mans the. Persons, the gatehouse. It involves no money, we don't pay anything, they don't pay anything, but because they are on our facility. We have to have an agreement with them. I know we have this thing with the um. Community Association, the, 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 the money issue.
We did last meeting?
Yes, but. The start of June is hurricane season.
We need it.
And I just think we should have it in place as shortly after the beginning of June as we can. Whether we're settled with them or not, cause we need these people to feel like they can, they can come there and not be trespassers and all that sort of stuff.
The only thing I had on that is I explained last time is I'm very concerned about not opening up in an emergency, opening up that back gate.
Right, and Bob mentioned that last.
We, we need to have that as an option, yeah.
Right. And I think you were going to include that, weren't you?
It was told to add that to it.
I, I don't recall that being, because.
I, I talked to the gentleman that's writing the doc.
Oh, okay.
Danny Clemens and. Suggested that that be added also.
I s- I don't suggest that because it has to, the gate has to be manually. It, it's an automatic gate, so staff is the only ones that are trained to go and open it, and we're gonna have staff here regardless. I don't wanna give any control.
We can change it to the fact that they'll have the number to call.
You, we, last thing we wanna do is have three, four hundred homes trapped. Oh, because they can't get.
We all agree.
Uh, what, just a correction, it's June, Randy messaged me June fifth for the admin building as of right now is the bid opening date. Yep, so I'm gonna give um, or bids, bid due date, so I'm gonna give you guys um an update at the May sixteenth with the timelines and, and what we all agreed on.
It and the park parallel.
Yes. We have a, we have a way to make it happen.
And then my second thing is that based on the conversation that we had earlier in this meeting. About the bonds and what can be used for what and where and categories and all that sort of stuff, which I'll be honest with you. My eyes glaze over uh with, but honestly, I think we need to start looking at that sooner rather than later. So is it possible that we can have a, a discussion maybe at our workshop? Uh, at the next meeting about what we could and can. I, I don't, I don't care what we can't do, just tell me what we could do.
We need to have Stephen involved in this to tell us. Cause he knows that we have shortages, cause I've talked to him about it. We've got immense shortages on both the park and on the building. And those two are totally different.
I'm just thinking about the building.
Yeah, but the two are tied together because we made that.
Yeah, but I think.
So we gotta be able to answer them both.
We only made the dirt happen, Ed. We didn't make the actual courts.
It's still, it's still the money though, cause that money comes out of this bond. And it's not the same people that pay for it. The building, the people who pay for the building are so totally different to the people that pay for the park. Totally different.
I think the only question is of, and I can't recall all the categories that were in there. I think there's some stormwater facilities, some other, some other, a number of other capital improvements.
And everything is in there too, I understand that.
Right, and it becomes, okay, you have the administrative admin building that services everybody. What other categories are in there with our capital costs that, that provide a benefit to all properties?
It's, it's, it's a cou- it's, it's a couple of things, which we can go and I'd be more than happy to meet one on one with you. I learned more bonds than I ever cared to learn. Pelican had a bond issuance and Greater Gate, we had a bond issuance. There's more flexibility on the Greater Gateway side with regards to the subcategories than there is on the Pelican side, cause we only did what we said we would need on your side. We took out that first series, which we only took a small portion of the grander scheme of. The master engineer's report. So I can, I'd be more than happy, Laura and I can sit down with you one on one, um and we can go over that, or we can go in depth at the next board meeting. Laura's been working crunching on um looking at the bond sheets and see where we're at with regards to the expenditures. Um, so she's trying to get that wrapped up.
Well, just right now, what I wanna make sure, cause this is getting down to nuts bolt time here. If these bids come in high, as we expect them to be, and we only have three point six budgeted. What do we have to do to make three six a bigger number? Do we have to go back and have another bond advertisement?
You would have us, you could, you could, within that administrative category, move money around with contention upon Pedro and everybody's review. The engineer's report updated.
So what's the total, the, the, what is the total amount of money that's remaining in that bond that should we be? So that we know can. Transfer two million dollars.
From capital reserves.
From, no, not from capital reserves, from the capital that was in the bond and identified.
Over and above the three point six?
Yes, yes.
They, Pelican does not have any di- any additional out of their bond, so if the delta of the three point six and the, and let's just say it's five. They'd have to come up with their fourteen percent. Elsewhere. Same thing with utility fund, the twenty seven, twenty seven percent, we would have to figure out of that.
Pelican could make a cash pay.
You'd have to unless we did another bond issuance.
That's my point, okay.
So in other words, I don't want you to tell me you can't do this because of this and you can't do that. I just want to, you to give me the options of what we can do. So you can do this, this and this.
I can do it.
The other list might be shorter.
Well, that's true. Hopefully that's true.
We, we can work on putting that together. No, it is not, it is, it is.
Not simple.
That's all I had.
You have anything else for agenda management? I don't.
No, I think that's.
So supervisor comment, I'll go ahead and tell it Carol?
Nope.
Okay, uh first of all, kudos to uh Daniel. We're getting the uh utility person hired for Pelican, he's now on board. Uh, we still haven't seen our swirly derby cleaner out there yet, but it's coming, but it's coming. Uh, the second thing is hope that, pray to God. Uh, the meeting on Monday with the community association to get the process against uh taking the easements to their attorney. So we may have that one finally behind. So uh, we're down that, that path, but the meeting is set Monday morning.
Uh, awesome, and then I will do that in a second. Uh, Doug, you have anything?
Yeah, just two quick things. Um, Chelsea, where are we at with the utility? Um, building updates onsite?
Uh, they're waiting on their building permit and their anticipated construction start is June, July.
Okay, and then the other thing, can we get a schedule of uh what the. Okay, and then the other thing, can we get a schedule of uh what the summer plan is for the for the fields? What's gonna be, when when are we closing? What maintenance is gonna be?
Yep, I'll have uh Daniel put that in his monthly report for the next meeting, the summer shutdown schedule and then the anticipated uh. Maintenance that'll occur. I just if you wanna step up to the mic and introduce yourself and.
Hello, I'm Nathan Nally. I'm the new Public Works Project Manager. Uh it's my first week. Thank you very much.
Give a little bit of background about yourself.
Background about myself. I'm originally from Kentucky, uh just retired from the Navy, twenty years, uh submarine radioman. Uh so project management on the government side. Now I'm moving into public.
We're we're underwater here a lot, so.
Bear him off. He's all that we wanted.
I can swim. It's okay.
Well, actually, you were at the pond meeting this morning.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't have anything.
The gentleman here came in late. I didn't know if he had something. I didn't wanna leave somebody at the.
About this, I pointed it out to him. I see the back of this house from the back of my lot. And uh it involves the country club. And I'm not asking for a lot of money or any money, but I think it's time that the country be club becomes a good neighbor. And I look at this butt bank and it knows about it. And he, there's a back hole and all this stuff can be done. It's cost a lot of money. But now that the water's going down, since they're watering whatever's over there to water twice a day. Uh if they put that purple plant that they have in the drive when we come in. That would spread and cover that mess up that I've been looking at for twenty five years. I've been here twenty five years and it's been that way when we own the country club. It's been that way now. In fact, I don't understand why once a month that they can't well weed whack. The weed whack the weeds down, so they're not two feet tall.
What the issue is here?
Can you just have your name for the record?
Ron Preboz.
Thank you.
Just to clarify what Ron's talking about, he lives directly across from the worst escarpment in all of Gateway. Along the eighteenth toll, seventeenth toll, the eighteenth toll, it's a.
Starts at the, but the eighteen is not too bad.
Yeah, but it's it's a huge escarpment.
Quick question, is that a game, is it a country club issue?
It's ours.
It's ours?
It's ours.
Can you can you send me a picture or tell me the location and we'll follow up on it?
If you go to, if you go on the map to Lake Run Circle. Go across the lake to the club. It's right there. Ron's the last house on Lake Run Circle.
Ron Preboz. Like the big old motorhome. I got it.
Alright, well, thank you.
And then the other thing is this. I guess the way I think we're all neighbors, aren't we? And uh. I've lived my life to love my neighbors myself. Now, I agree with the traffic thing of slowing things down. I certainly agree with that. So I'm not in disagreement with the little cameras and all that stuff. The thing that was sort of shocking is that the first offense was a hundred dollars.
Ron, that's an HOA issue. That's that doesn't.
But we want to hear. Tell us all about it.
He said it was a homo, it was my friend, my neighbors. But the big thing is this, I I agree with that, but I I can't understand why the first offense couldn't be twenty five dollars. Now, my wife is paying because she didn't want any problem. She paid a whole a hundred fifty dollars. Because we got fined for the dog on garage door people. I've talked to a lot of people about that garage door thing.